What's with you?
Good evening, Rockland, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, January 28th, 2019. First on tonight's agenda, we'll be looking for the approval of two sets of meeting minutes. First meeting of December 10th, 2018. We'll be looking for a motion to approve. We have a motion? And a second?
I can't say that.
Dick and I weren't here, so it's...
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Three, that is a vote. Thank you very much. Next up, we're looking to approve the meetings, the meeting minutes of our last meeting, January 14th, 2019.
Motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? All those in favor?
I'll stand.
That's a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
You second.
Seeing nothing under communications, if it is agreeable to the rest of the committee, we'd like to just make a quick change to our agenda this evening, and we would like to move the smiling faces from the Memorial Park PBIS team and student kindness part of our agenda right up to the front, because we know it is school night, and we have some kids that want to go home and have dessert. Right, kids?
Yeah.
So we'll invite the, we'll invite all the kids to come on up from Memorial Park.
Look down, look down.
It is, this is what it's all about.
Who's toy?
It's the dog's toy, I think.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, it's getting the toy.
Boys and girls, continue around a little bit more, please, so we can well see you.
Yeah, come on up there.
Get out from behind.
Much better, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're from Memorial Park School. My name is Ruth Ann LaShudo, and I'm the Speech and Language Pathologist at Memorial Park School, and I'm involved in a lot of the school assemblies. And tonight, Mrs. Sheehan couldn't make it. She's not feeling very well, but she asked me to let everyone know that our theme and our focus for Memorial Park School this year has been kindness. Be kind. That's been our focus and our theme. So every month, the school has monthly assemblies, and our focus on those has been kindness. Every assembly, we focus something on the theme of kindness. We read a book, we have a teacher challenge, something to remind all of us to be kind every day. So we brought students here today to tell you a little bit about how we do that at Memorial Park. We also have banners up in our school that remind us that we're always kind. We also have posters and other things in the, in the school that shows us and reminds us that we're all kind. On February 15th, it's World Kindness Day, and Memorial Park plans to celebrate that by going out into the community. The different grades will be visiting different community members to thank them for their service and to present something kind to them. So we're going to start with the students, and the first person that's going to come up is Nashmia. Come on up, Nashmia. Go ahead, you can just talk, you talk loud, the microphone will get out. Okay, so say your name.
My name is Nashmia. I'm in first grade. We get bulldogs from the art, the art teacher, music teacher, and gym teacher.
Good. And Audrey, I want to ask you, why do you get bulldogs? Big bulldogs?
Hold on, just a second. Let me, let me help out here.
Oh, her?
Yeah. Help you help out. Here, you've got these cool mics right here, so no one can see you when you're over here, so why don't you come on up here?
I want to see that. How's it hanging?
We get bulldogs when we have 20 bulldogs, and when we have 20 bulldogs, we get a surprise from all other teachers who come to our class.
And Audrey, how do we earn those? How does your class earn those bulldogs?
We earn those bulldogs when...
Respectfully?
When we're respectful and honest.
That's right, for the whole class, right? So every specialist, if you're kind and you're respectful, they'll give you a bulldog for the whole class, right? And when you earn 20 bulldogs, you get a reward. What's one of the rewards?
We'll have Zoe come in, or we have extra recess.
Right.
Who is Zoe?
The dog.
That's Zoe. Wow, awesome. Hi, Zoe.
So maybe I can talk a little bit about Zoe. Zoe is a therapy dog that comes into the school on a weekly basis. She's my dog. We went to dog, we went to therapy training together, and when the children choose Zoe, we come in, and she's a reading dog also, a reading partner dog, so the children can read to her. But mostly, they like to just hang out with Zoe and pat her, and it makes for a great visit. So that's one of the rewards that the kids get. They can also choose extra recess or extra gym time for earning all those bulldogs. So let's see, who's next on our list? Sorry. Trinity.
Hi, my name is Trinity.
Come over here, Trinity. You're pretty tall, but that way we can see you.
Should the podium moved?
Hi, Trinity. There you go.
Hi, my name is Trinity, and I'm in second grade. At school, we have a kindness calendar, and we have been scratching off the kind thing to do every day. One day, we gave teachers compliments.
And Toby? Come on over, Toby.
Hi, Toby.
Hi, my name is Toby. I am in second grade. A different day, we wrote a note to the cafeteria helpers. At home, you can help your mom with the dishes every day. That would be very kind.
I think she would agree.
So Trinity's going to come up, and...
And I would like to give a compliment to Mrs. LaShudo for being very, very nice and smiling at everybody.
Aw, thank you, Trinity. That was totally unexpected. Thank you. And who else is we, oh, Toby?
I'm going to give a compliment to my dad for helping our town as a police officer.
I think that's a great one.
That's a great one, too. Thomas, you're up. Come on up.
Hey, Tom.
Hi, my name is Thomas Welch from third grade. In December, all the grade levels had a kindness challenge. Kindergarten's challenge was to say please and thank you. First grade's challenge was to say good morning to three people every day with eye contact and a smile. Next, you speak about grades two, three, and four, and four is Brayden Mills.
Hey, Brayden. What's up, buddy? Yeah, come on over here, so Tom, so everyone can see the sign there. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Brayden Mills from third grade. Second grade's challenge was asking new friends to play at recess. I did third grade challenge. I picked up something in the hallway, cafeteria, and classroom, even if it wasn't mine. Fourth grade's kindness challenge is give a compliment every day. It was definitely helping people be kind.
Great job, Brayden. Hey, Brayden, can I ask you a question? A lot of people here might know your grandfather. Can you tell everyone who your grandfather is?
Thomas F. Mills Jr.
Good job. I bet you learned all your kindness from him.
Are you Papa?
Hi, Isabel. Hey, Isabel, before you go, I think someone around here might know your dad, too. Who's your dad?
Michael A. Garofalo.
Family affair here tonight in school committee. Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Izzy Garofalo from grade three. The kindness awards are from teachers if they spot students being kind, they get an award. I have gotten an award myself, so I read it on the announcements and got a postcard to my house. Not everyone has gotten an award yet, but it doesn't mean they aren't being kind. Here's my kindness award. I knew my friend Hattie cold sore, so after school, I went shopping and bought her a chapstick that would help it.
Very nice. Great job. Maybe we'll read...
Yeah, uh, want me to read it for you?
Sure, go ahead. You want to read it together with your sister? I bet if you do it at the same time, you could do a great job together. What do you think? Go right ahead. Sure, go ahead.
My friend's sticker ripped, so I gave it to her my sticker.
Great job. Great job.
And now we have Rome.
Hi, Rome. How are you, my friend? Good to see you again.
My name is Rome Kelly. A lot of kids have got in-kindness awards this year, and some kids haven't, but they're going to get one eventually. It's important for adults to be as kind as possible. We also have a challenge for all the adults. Here is your own kindness calendar for the month of February. Good luck.
Good job. Great job.
So, yeah, now, the students would like to present something to the school committee members.
Great, good job. Good job.
This is your February kindness calendar.
Thank you, Tommy. Thank you, kiddo, buddy. It's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wow.
Thank you so much. You look very pretty tonight. Go ahead. He's not as scary as he looks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Oh, thank you.
Very cool.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pretty dress.
Thank you very much. Oh, these are cool.
Wow. So lastly, we would just really like to thank the committee for inviting us here and letting us share with you all the kind things that have been happening at Memorial Park. We're really proud of the school this year and all the students and staff. We've really embraced this, and we hope to share it with everyone. Right, everyone? Yeah, so thank you. Thank you.
Not only a great job every day in school by getting all the awards and doing all the great work of being kind, but great job coming here tonight. It's not easy sometimes to get up in front of people and talk, and you guys look like you did it a million times. Great job. Any other questions or for the kids from the rest of the committee?
Happy to hear it.
I think my wife did an amazing job raising kind girls.
I second that.
I think that's what they get at girls. They did, they did a super job.
And the kindness calendar is a scratch-off, so we should... Oh, very cool. Every day, scratch one off. Thank you.
Well, we have to wait till next week, right?
Yes.
February 4th.
February 4th, yeah.
Okay. Great job, ladies. Good job.
Bye, guys.
Thank you. Kids and parents of kids, don't feel obligated to stick around for the rest of this boring meeting. I know you've got that dessert at home waiting for you, kids. You did a great job. See you, Rome.
Bye, guys. Bye, guys.
Sonya.
That's awesome.
I always liked to go far out.
Good job. Bye. Good job. Good job, buddy.
Get a selfie? You want to get a selfie with Papa? Here, Papa.
Do you want me to take it from over here?
You can, sure. You can do it. Get a selfie?
Yeah.
I was going to say, let me out of the way.
Alright.
Sorry. Take all the time in the world.
Take all the time.
Okay, come here.
About every day, doesn't it?
No, it's not every day.
Yay, that's awesome. Wonderful.
Alright, great, thank you very much.
You don't have homework?
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, Mills.
Thank you. So...
Now you're with all your friends.
So as ladies and gentlemen, members of the school committee, we clearly don't make a whole heck of a lot of money or anything like that, but that's the reason why we do this. Yeah, this is what the best part about being a school committee member is, is seeing happy faces like that and seeing the great things that are happening in our school. So that was awesome. Thank you very much.
Best part of any of these meetings is the Kirkland Corner.
Absolutely, without a doubt.
I really wish we actually pointed out the sign that was up there, that they had about being the kind kid, because that was painted by the art teacher.
It's brand new.
Oh, I didn't know that. Cool. Yeah. Cool. So in, for other examples of tough acts to follow, Dr. Cron, you have our superintendent.
Excellent. Yeah, okay. So as you may remember, this is, I'm going to discuss our transportation audit. As you may remember, we contracted with Masbo to conduct a thorough audit of our transportation services. So last week, Mrs. Hackett and I were interviewed by two directors of transportation from other districts, Mr. Drew Damian of the Palmer Public Schools and Ms. Sandy Gifford of the Barnstable Public Schools. We spent about an hour with them. The rest of the administrative team, in different combinations, also met with them. Our hope is to come out of this audit process with a more effective transportation program. So they, they have experience with contracts, which we've had a lot of questions about our contract with First Student, and we left that meeting knowing that we got our money's worth, and we're anticipating some savings to be able to pass along to the district as a result of this audit. But I will say that even in their initial observations, they were very complimentary of Colleen Forlizzi and Linda Miniglia and her staff and the work that they did to bring much of the special education transportation in-house. So we're not, we're not paying a company to transport. We've rented vans on our own and hired drivers. They were very complimentary of their work, and of course, it's always an opportunity whenever we're talking about buses, anything buses, to thank Patty Penny, who has the patience of Job, and who does just an outstanding job with our buses and working with First Student. So we were very excited about, very happy with that interview and came away feeling as though we had learned something already, and I'm really looking forward to their report and taking action on the report. So I'll share that with you when it comes in.
Did they have access to other bus companies?
They know, they've been doing this for so long. They're so knowledgeable. They know all the companies that have come and gone, and they understand, I mean, we've, we used the word collusion, which, which was, you know, a concern. We're certainly not the first town to ask, why is only one company bidding?
Yeah.
And how does that all work? They were very informative, and they gave us some suggestions already that will improve our, our work with First Student. So we're, we're, let's just say, First Student would probably not be the ones who would recommend us having a Masbo audit, because they were, they're very knowledgeable, and they'll help us save some money. So I wish I had done it last year.
Yeah. Excellent.
My compliments to you, because I, I've been around a while, and I don't recall anyone doing an audit on this particular situation with the buses. And as you point out, with only really one bidder now, I think it's important, because if I'm, unless I'm wrong, you don't have to take the low bid, am I right?
Oh, you know, that's a good question.
If you have people that are not responding as you, either by their contract or as you prefer them to do, then you can go up and take second high bidder or whatever.
Except when they're not anyone else.
Second a low bidder.
Right. Yeah, I, I think our, there's, there's, there's upside to small companies, but there's also a downside. So some of the, some of the smaller companies, I guess there, there's a real driver shortage that's in the Midwest and the West Coast that's moving east. But First Student doesn't really have a driver shortage, so that's, that's an upside of their organization. So if someone gets sick, you're not all of a sudden looking at, you know, a large group of students who aren't being picked up on the corner.
Yeah.
But anyway, it gives us a really good overview, and it gave us some specifics already to begin working on, but we're excited about that. I think it's been, it's going to be money well spent.
Good.
Always good to look at yourself and make sure that you're doing, doing as good a job as you can. Next, I want to remind everyone out there that kindergarten registration did take place last week, but you're not too late. If you have any questions about kindergarten registration, you can contact Patty Penny. You can call my office, but her email is P Patricia, P Patricia at RocklandSchools.org, and she'd be happy to answer any of your questions about kindergarten registration. Yes, that is the same Patty Penny that we were, we were complimenting on her buses. She also does kindergarten, so. Next, I wanted to follow up. I'd given you some news about some boilers we're having trouble with, and I wanted to give you a little more information. I had shared with you two, two of our hot water tanks, one at the Esten School and one at the high school. So according to Mark Shum, the Esten water heater is 12 to 15 years old, and the inside insulation on that water heater has collapsed, which is similar to what's happening at the high school, but the high school's is only five years old. So that's a concern. It's not under warranty. Mark said, we've had issues with it over the past three years. He's contacted the company several times for information, but it is not under warranty. So the boiler that we have at the high school is the same boiler that we have at the middle school, and they're both failing. The one at the high school now has a patch on it, which is keeping it running. We have a patch on the boiler at Esten, which is also keeping that running, but they'll have to be replaced very shortly. So he said basically the quality of the boilers that, that we purchased for the middle and the high school were not that good, but also that Rockland has, has very difficult water. And, and the pipes, the pipes, he's seen the corrosion that, that is, you know, taking place. But anyway, Mark is all over it. He's already gotten some estimates, so we have ideas of where we are financially, but I just wanted to give you that updated information because, so that you're able to answer those questions if you're asked.
Excellent.
Okay? And that's all I have.
Any questions with Dr. Cron from the committee?
Is there any thought? This is my insurance mind working here, but a boiler lasting 12 to 15 years is normal. A boiler lasting five years is not. Two boilers lasting five years is not. Why should, we should, I'm wondering, might not be under warranty, but there might be some product issues, manufacturing issues there. I see it all the time in claims, that a failure has led to something. I'm, I don't disagree with Mark on the water, but I have a 30-year-old boiler in my house, has the same water in Rockland.
Right.
You know, Esten has the same water.
Right.
And that's 12 to 15 years old. MP has the same water. So to me, if the two boilers are the same and they're failing, there's a manufacturer defect there that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, good point.
I would, I, I understand that it's going to cost money to have that looked at, but it also is going to cost a hell of a lot more money to do two boilers five years later from now.
Right.
So I just, I'm, I'm not in love with this.
Yeah, no, I think we're looking at replacing much quicker than five years out. I think Mark is looking at imminent failure.
No, but I mean, these only lasted five years. I'm not doing this again.
Right, right, exactly, right, right, right.
They're the same type of boilers, right? They're the same manufacturer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was when we did the buildings all, but they were...
They both got them.
Right. So I can pursue that with, I'll pursue that with Mark and...
Can you have Mark maybe email me the specs on those boilers?
Sure.
So I can make a few calls to the people I know who do that stuff.
What about the contract, Agostini?
Be another person that we could, we could have a conversation with.
He's not out of statute of repose. So that's...
Good point.
Another two years, so.
Okay. Thank you. We want to keep hot water in our schools, that's for sure. Very important.
Yeah, not spending $100,000 to fix it.
Absolutely.
Alright, seeing no one under audience, we'll move on to five reports. Now we'll be looking for five motions of approval on our financial reports for November and December. The financial reports will include reports from the school department, high school student activities, middle school student activities, cafeteria, and daycare. So you want 10 motions? Five on each? Yes, sir. 10 motions. 10, sir. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. And again, same thing with the monthly reports for November and December. We're going to be looking for 18 motions twice. So first off, we're going to be looking for motions for the art department, the athletic department, the computer technologies department, daycare, deans, English 5 to 8, English 9 to 12, family consumer science, health and physical education, math 5 to 8, math 9 to 12, music, radio, TV, science, social studies, special education, middle school, and foreign language. So first, why don't we move to, have make 18 motions for the reports for November. 18 motions for November.
18 seconds.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you. 18 motions for December. And we're looking for 18 seconds for November. We have, all those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much. Next up, we have under old business. We have, this is beginning to be a common name this evening, Mr. Rich Penny here with us this evening as the chairman of our school building committee to give us a very exciting tonight, I know, school building committee update. Welcome, Mr. Penny.
I think Patty would have already had this built.
Thank you very much. There is a reason why my wife has the patience that she does. She's had to live with me for 27 years, so I've trained her well. No. So I thought this was great earlier with the kids. That was awesome. It really was. So some exciting news. This, this process, we've been going down the road almost a year. It's, it's going slow, but this last meeting, we had a, a little bit of a breakthrough. So we've been working through where potentially this school is going to go. Started with over 20 sites, we narrowed it down to four sites with nine different options, and as of the last meeting, we actually, as a committee, chose what we felt was the best site and the best option. For anyone that's familiar with the town, it is what is the Oval at Memorial Park. So we have the girls JV softball field and the football field, lacrosse, the field that gets beat up all the time. So as we went through the process, we felt that that was the best options for a couple of reasons. It was really the only option that we had that kept that school at two stories. Every other option was three to four stories. The other thing that was beneficial about it was, and I think is really important, is potential drop off and pickup. We were actually able to lay this out where we could have a dedicated area for the buses to drop off and a dedicated area for parents to pick up and drop off. We do know, obviously, all the options that we had came with some issues. So whether it was size of lot, whether it was wetlands, whether it was traffic, there was a bunch of different issues, and we don't have the perfect site, but we, we think we found the right site for what we need. I think the other benefit of this, it will allow us to kind of centralize our sports fields, so it won't be broken up. The stadium will be kind of off by itself, but all the other fields will kind of flow into each other. So it was a unanimous vote. We did go with the option of 760 students. So as part of this study, we've been looking whether it's a combined elementary school, grades one through four, or if it would be a replacement of the Jefferson at 340 students. And based on all the information that we've got back, all the work that we've done, working with MSBA, as a committee, we felt the best option was the 760. It will allow every student in the school system equal access to everything, from pre-K to kindergarten, first through fourth grade, fifth through eighth, or ninth through 12th. I also believe it will be able to, they'll be able to start building a true community in early education in pre-K and kindergarten. It won't be that they're separated by three schools, and then all of a sudden, when they get to middle school, they come together. They'll be able to, right from the get-go, start together, so. Any questions? into each other. So it was a unanimous vote. We did go with the option of 760 students. So as part of this study, we've been looking whether it's a combined elementary school, grades one through four, or if it would be a replacement of the Jefferson at 340 students. And based on all the information that we've got back, all the work that we've done, working with MSBA, as a committee, we felt the best option was the 760. It will allow every student in the school system equal access to everything, from pre-K to kindergarten, first through fourth grade, fifth through eighth, or ninth through 12th. I also believe it will be able to, they'll be able to start building a true community in early education and pre-K and kindergarten. It won't be that they're separated by three schools and then all of a sudden, when they get to middle school, they come together. They'll be able to, right from the get-go, start together, so. Any questions?
Or questions, just want to comment. First of all, thank you for the great work you're doing as chairman of the building committee. For folks that haven't been able to catch them on TV, I know they're not the most widely rated or watch things on TV these days, but Rich has been running a great meeting, he's been doing a lot of work along with the entire committee and I think that everyone out there should be aware that the committee that has been organized is a very diverse committee, I would say.
Yes.
Both in age and approach to where they might come from such a project and was organized in such a way to make sure that all voices were heard and all concerns from the community were brought out. And I know that having gone to all these meetings, that all the sites that Rich talked about just a second ago were looked at very, very closely and really just a lot of work was put in by the committee. So for anybody that's on that committee, first of all, thank you and, you know, what great work. And I know some members of this committee have sat on that and worked hard for it too, so thanks. There's been a lot of work done up until this point now. And I know the town, over the past several, I guess a little over a year, that's been the biggest question, is where is it going to be?
Yeah.
And, you know, I think that was really a big step that happened at our last meeting and I think you put it really perfectly as that, you know, we don't have a perfect site. It doesn't exist. We're not blessed with acres and acres of open space in Rockland, but I think it is the right site from the options that we had and I'm really excited about it. I'm really excited about the choice of the site and what I think the opportunity that this could provide our community going forward. The thing that I really love about the site is what it will provide our community as far as a downtown campus.
Yeah.
It'll really, the school campus, well, all of our schools will be together in one site that will directly annex to our downtown, which I think will really incorporate the schools into the downtown growing environment and vice versa, the town being part of our school community as well. So I'm excited about it, but I know that was a mouthful. I'm sorry for blubbing a little bit. I know the members of the committee have some comments.
I just want to say one thing. So it's the preferred option.
Correct.
So this is not, this is not in stone that this is where the school's going to be, so we had to, we have to present everything to the MSBA, but as part of the process, they come back to the town after the, after the town has done their due diligence to what is their preferred site and that's what we came up with. So the MSBA could change that. It's unlikely, but they could. You know, the other part, Dan, on the campus, we literally will connect from town hall to the senior center, which I think is really unique. You know, talk about bringing everything together. The day-to-day work at the town hall, the school system, and then our seniors are all going to be in unison, in one area, so I think that's good.
The dream of what it could be is really impressive. I think it could really be an impressive spot and apprentice of Crown Center jewel to our town. Any questions, comments from the committee about?
I have a thing.
Mrs. Maroni?
Is he talking?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mike. So while we were there, one of our decisions was putting it down almost on top of Memorial Park now, closer to the senior center, or where we chose to go on the lower oval. And I myself was hemming and hawing because I didn't really want it up so close to the middle school as opposed to down, you know, giving that space. But then when they showed us the layout of the school and the potential and the flexibility and the chance for the children to be able to learn in that environment and the layout, I was totally sold. I can honestly say I was definitely on the fence. I don't know that we were all on the fence, but for me now, I really feel like even more excited that this is the possibility, that this school really could be anything we really could dream, you know? And just, if you do watch that meeting, you'll get to see it, the slide of the visual of what the school really could look like. It's very exciting. It's the opportunity for Rockland to really, like you said, have a hub, but be awesome for these grade one through four kids.
Can we bring the slide in?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
All right. Anything else?
The MSBA has, you know, they've looked at all these sites already, didn't they?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, yes, it's been, it's been ongoing. So they've looked at, we've looked at every single, you know, it started out at 21 sites.
Yeah, I read the list, including the dump.
Yeah, exactly. So this was not something that was taken lightly.
Yeah.
It literally has been, what, 11 months, 10 months in the process. We've done our due diligence. The company that we hired has been, or the companies that we've hired, our owner's project management team and the architects, they really have done a great job. I will tell you, I was involved in the, in the building of this in the, in the middle school and we were the second project under MSBA at that time. And MSBA has changed their process and I think for the better. In hindsight, we did things a little bit backwards for this school and that was following the MSBA guidelines, but they were new to it as well. I think they've, you know, they've revamped what the process is and I think we're going to end up with an even better product than what we, than what we had here.
And I think they take the time, like, we stopped them and asked them questions. I was making sure that there are routes in and out for the pickup and drop off. I'm the one that picked up in our house at Memorial Park Inn at the middle school and I stopped them and asked them, "Wait, show us, is it going to be rolling?" And they totally listened and I love that too. You're never intimidated. Anyone in the meeting is certainly able to speak. It's just...
MP now is a nightmare for pickup and drop off, as it is, so.
Yes, it is.
Anything that, I can't tell you the amount of complaints I hear on a day-to-day basis standing there.
It's been 35 years.
Yeah, I know, I know. I went there and I can remember saying to my parents, "That's so ridiculous." But I have two things. One, so with it going there, obviously that impacts the fields, right?
Yes.
So the fields are going to get moved, repositioned and stuff. Does the MSBA consider that part of our reimbursements because it was impacted by the school being put there?
So the answer to that is yes, but their reimbursement policy is very limited to non-building. So there potentially could be some, some help on that and that was one of the advantages. So if you're doing a project and tied into it, you're doing, you want to do athletic fields that are not joined to where the site of the building is, the MSBA won't do anything. So this is, it's joint parcels, so.
There's the possibility that they do something.
There'll be a little help, but to be honest with you, Mike, it's not a lot. They limit the money towards fields.
Yeah, no, that's, I just, I just wanted it known that that is there versus, you know...
The next meeting, Mike, is February 7th. You can come and join us and ask too. And that's what I think is the coolest thing, is all these questions we get to think of and ask.
And then the other thing I have isn't a question, it's a general comment. We did such a good job, I say we, I wasn't even the town at the time, you guys did such a good job with these two buildings that other towns started copying us, right? East Bridgewater just did it because, well, Rockland did it and it worked. Holbrook did it, Rockland did it, it worked, right? Abington did it because we did it, it worked. All these towns are doing that and now here we are again, we're going to do it, we're going to get it done, I'm being positive, and other towns are going to look at what we did and you're going to start seeing the schools that need a new, the towns that need a new elementary school are going to start trying to centralize everything. Because like you said, it's going to be cool when it's done, that town hall straight through to the senior center is all connected. From the beginning to the end is, everything's there. And that's ideal and it's great for uptown, like Dan said, and I think, I think that's, the preferred option to me was always the best option, so I think that's great.
This has to go in front of the MSBA board for selection.
Yes.
When is that, do you know when that might be?
If everything is, if everything gets submitted, everything's done, they will, they will review it in April. If we miss that date, it'll be June, but we believe we're going to be able to hit the April date.
That'd be good.
Yeah. You know, Mike, just a comment on what you said, you know, what we did thinking outside the box of going to the MSBA after the middle school was approved and asking or telling them about what our thoughts were about attaching it to the high school and renovating it. Because at the end of the day, if we didn't do that, we would have had a 1960 high school that we would be facing doing that.
Right.
A high school now, I haven't seen, the last high school's 140, 150 million dollars. We did the whole project for 86.
Right.
The elementary school, we kind of took the same logic that we used here. We've got, you know, one elementary school from 1928, another one in 1950 or 51. They only, they were, the MSBA was willing to do one school, they chose the Jefferson. But with what the path we're going down, we literally, if this all gets approved, we will literally be able to replace our elementary schools. And when you look at the cost benefit and I don't take this lightly on what a school costs and the impact to our townspeople. Believe me, everyone in this committee takes, we talk about it every day and it's why we did what we did here and it's why we're looking to do, are doing at the elementary school because if we don't, right after we got this built to replace Jefferson, we still are facing Memorial Park in a 60-year-old building.
Right.
That doesn't meet any standards. So again, as we do this, trying to, trying to think outside the box and bring some solutions, at the end of the day, and I know people may find this hard to believe, it's actually will save us money as a town by doing this and we take that serious. It's not something that we take lightly as a board.
No, I mean, it saves all over. Like you said, you turn one failed building into a new building for all three.
Right.
And you're not dealing with, in five years, Memorial Park needs to be bulldozed, you know? And then you add to the fact that we're not paying $100,000 for a boiler at Jefferson and Memorial Park.
Well, hopefully not, so we'll, you know...
You know, like there's...
We'll have the boiler mastered by then.
Yeah, we better.
You know, so one of the things with that, and not to get down what I do for work, but, you know, one of the things that we may want to do is, in this design process, take some detailed water samples and look to potentially treat our heating, cooling and kitchen equipment with filtration that's designed specifically for the water. We didn't take that step when we designed this building and quite honestly, the water in town continues to get worse and worse, so that may be something we want to add to what we do because if, it's really a water issue. It's not a, it's not a quality issue. I'm seeing it more and more in my, water is changing tremendously.
I don't disagree with that, but I literally see more boiler failures and hot water failures.
Mike, I can tell you right now, the MWRAs water has changed dramatically in two years. We are seeing, because I do commercial kitchen heaters and equipment, we are seeing equipment fail within a year or two in Boston, that before 20 years, we didn't have it. We took water samples, the water has changed dramatically. It's what's causing it, so it's just something that we might want to look at.
Yeah.
All right? No, absolutely.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much for being with us. All right, always exciting news hearing our school building committee update. Next up, item B under old business, we have some completed fundraisers. We have two completed fundraisers. The sophomore class had a fudge sale that raised $210. The service learning organization had Savers fundraiser that raised $1,298 and there were several packs that got, several fundraisers that got canceled. The RMS pack canceled three fundraisers. The freshman class robotics club and National Honor Society all found it necessary to cancel their fundraisers, but great job, other than that.
I'm going to buy all of the pajama tops.
They're, could be comfy, I guess.
Yeah, it would be, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Excellent. Next up, we have under item C, our updated budget timeline. Dr. Cronin?
Yeah, I just wanted to update the committee that pushed out the presentation of the budget just a little bit. Just wanted to keep you in the loop, so we're aiming for February 11th. I plan to present the preliminary budget here to the school committee. February 12th, present it to the town. February 25th, meet with finance committee liaisons, Mark Pulsifer and Dan Ryan. Then in February and March, Jane and I will work with finance committee and the town accountant to work on the budget. There'll be a public hearing for the budget on April 22nd here at the high school in the conference room at 5:30 and there'll be a final budget presented here at, just shortly after that meeting here at the school committee. Then May 1st, we close for all purchase orders and then we look forward to town meeting on May 6th. So that is the revised timeline for the budget.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a vote, thank you very much. Dr. Cronin?
Doctor, a question, all this talk from the Governor Baker about changing the formulas as to how schools are funded from the state, not to burden you with the whole thing, but you must be concerned about that.
Yeah, I'd like to be optimistic, but the Chapter 70 numbers that were released by the governor's office the other day show very minimal increase in Chapter 70 support to towns and that affects schools, so I'm going to wait and see. But I am optimistic, the reform of the formula has been long overdue, long, long overdue, so, and it should, it should benefit Rockland.
Really? I was under the impression that the more affluent communities were going to get more now and the, some of the communities such as Rockland, blue collar type towns weren't going to get as much.
Well, I have, I'm thinking actually the opposite.
I hope you're right.
Yeah, yeah. I'm thinking the opposite. The push has been really from larger towns, not cities, so Brockton, the lawsuits that have been brought against the state have come from, I believe Brockton is a part of it, Lowell, Worcester and...
Maybe Boston.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. Well, I've never heard Boston's name mentioned. I think they're so big that they don't even, but they're the ones bringing the action against the state to drive, to drive this change, so I'm hoping that it will benefit us. But again, I'm going to remain cautiously optimistic.
And all the charter schools get 100% funded?
Yeah. I don't want to get started.
That's a story for another day.
It's a different rabbit hole to jump into.
I don't know.
Get me going on charter schools.
Think we hit that rabbit hole last year.
Seeing nothing under new business, personnel information. Dr. Cronin, anything you want to highlight?
Nothing to highlight, really, just welcome to the Rockland Public Schools if you've joined us and thank you for your service if you've left us.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cronin. Last but certainly not least on tonight's agenda as always is our public service announcements and as always, of course, ladies first.
Student.
Well, tonight I just want to say be kind, as always, and be sure to wash your hands and eat your fruits and veggies and get your sleep. I mean, the bug's going around, so stay away from that.
For all of us, absolutely, Jasmine. I think that's great sentiment, without a doubt. How's things going with school? Good?
Going pretty good, yeah.
Doing well from the student body? Everyone feeling good about the way things, the year's progressing?
Midterms are over, so, I mean, can't get rid of that.
It's only uphill from here, right?
Exactly.
Jasmine, how many more days?
Senior's 70 days. They already have the countdown going in the calf, so.
As they should be.
Oh, yeah.
As they should be. Great job.
Get ready for all your AP, you taking AP exams?
Yes, I am.
They're coming up real quick.
Oh, yeah, before I know it.
Everything does. Thank you very much, Jasmine, appreciate it. Mrs. Maroni?
The kids count down and the moms get sad that they're coming home for the summer. I actually like mine home, but, you know. I only have to say, I had the pleasure of going to the National Honor, National Junior Honor Society induction on Wednesday last week. It was my first time needing to speak. Usually one of you fine gentlemen are there and I don't need to speak, but I was the lone soldier, so I had to man up.
Woman up.
Woman up. You don't have to just say a woman. Anyhow, so it was a pleasure for me to be able to see these great kids showing their perseverance and sticking with it and along with doing their bookwork and their sports and dinner and homework and all of those sorts of things and still coming along this far. It was a pleasure to be there and I was impressed and they certainly represent Rockland really well. So, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroni. Mr. Mills?
I'm glad to be back to the meeting and particularly for this evening when my two lovely grandchildren were part of this well orchestrated event. Enjoyed it immensely and wish everybody a good Super Bowl weekend.
Absolutely, absolutely. We hope it is.
Go Pats.
With any luck, go Pats. Mr. Phelps?
Just, I have, going to have the pleasure tomorrow to go visit with our town clerk, Mr. Shortall, because I hope to be run and elected again to the Rockland School Committee. It's a pleasure for me to serve as I've served and very flattering the people that have always come out and supported me. The fire is still there, I believe it, and I'm looking forward, hopefully, to be reelected to the school committee.
This committee would be blessed and amen to that. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Garofalo? Mr. Graffalo?
Yes, yes. First, I would like to thank the PBIS system over at Memorial Park for their, their MP kind that they're doing. I think it's amazing. My kids love it. They love the postcards coming home with the little kindness awards on it and stuff, and I think that's great. But actually, what I wanted to do is, last week, a good friend of ours sitting here at this table launched a Tell Them Now thing on Facebook, and he did ask me to do one, and I am going to do one, but I'm going to do one big one right now, because I find it a point, because we're at the school committee meeting, that I want to do a Tell Them Now to our entire school system, from the administration to the faculty, to the cafeteria and the custodians. I think what you guys do day in, day out with our schools and our students truly makes this town what it is, and I think without that foundation, we're just another town. But because we have it, you know, we're this little, I call it a little perfect, little hidden hideaway that nobody knows about, and I like to keep it that way, but I also want everybody to come here and move here and make our schools even bigger. So, I want to thank all of you for all that you do. So, you can post that on your website, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Graffalo. And thank you for teeing up my public service announcement. You're welcome.